He said he has to hear that.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for today. We will begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have a public comment. We have some folks from the Lebanon's finest. If you'd like to come forward and sit up here. These are folks that are volunteers, pretty much lifetime affiliations with firefighting in Lebanon County, and they're here to enlighten us. So if you'd like to start by introducing yourselves, and then you may proceed.
Okay. I'm Mike Lyon. I'm the president of the Lebanon County Firefighter Association, also a facilitator at the fire training center, center, and also a adjunct instructor who's retired emeritus state instructor.
My name's Ron Miller. I've seen several of you people before, but not for a long time. I still am somewhat active, but not near as much as I used to be. I've been sort of making a lot of interchange with you over the years. I think it would be gracious enough to ask an old guy for an opinion.
Good.
I'm Eric Dulek. I'm a trustee down at the fire school, volunteer out at 57th. Just here to present our case here.
Okay, Mike, you're going to lead the discussion. Okay.
We're here basically for a water main system at the fire school. The facility was built in 1972 by the county commissioners for Lebanon County firefighters. Since then, like I said, the water system is iron. It's deteriorating. It's actually spreading the ball. Our samples we I took out of the out of the hydrant itself. It has a yellow color tint to it because of the iron content. The training ground is that same color because of the deterioration. We're actually getting the water main that comes into the system starting to fail and break apart inside. When you get to a fire apparatus, the pumps, there's a strainer there. And they're starting to get chips of this of this pipe into the into the into the pump. It's not going into the pump, but it's going into it. Never seen fire companies had it twice. Origins had it once. Ormawal Community has had it numerous times, and South Lebanon has also had some of the deterioration of the material of the iron coming in.
You know how the pipe is?
Pardon?
Is it an eight-inch pipe or six-inch?
I'm not sure what our water main is. I think it's six-inch. I think I believe it's six-inch. But it was, you know, like I said, the mechanic you guys put it in 1972. It's deteriorating. And we I don't know if we'd like to see if you guys can support us by having it repaired, you know, having the engineer look at it, you know, see what the cost would be to it. Because at this point, we can't afford it.
Yes, certainly, we will be willing to look at anything that you pitch. But if you could get us something in writing.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be anything too formal. Just give us some bullet points of what you're asking.
Okay.
And then maybe we could have you back for a workshop once we do some homework to, you know, keep the conversation alive.
Okay, sounds good.
They have those, I don't know if it's fiberglass, but it's a liner that they put in the pipe and then blow it up. And then they put an ultraviolet light in it, and it hardens.
I don't know.
And it extends the life significantly of the pipes, and it stops that rust coming in.
That would be fantastic. Anything, because we're actually worried that's getting into a pump, you know.
I understand.
We put a piece of fire apparatus right now to replace an engine over a million dollars, and a pump is, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars, you know. And we're quite busy. We picked up over the last four years, we picked up our essential programs. We run two of those a year, spring and fall. That's 150 hours. The state police use our facility. The county sheriff uses our facility. The probation board uses our facility. It's constantly being used.
Good.
And of course, the water is nonportable, so we have to go out and, you know, Costco or wherever and buy water for drinking.
Gotcha. All right. Well, that's our suggestion that you get something in writing to us that we can, you know, discuss and then get you back for another visit when we have more time at a workshop.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other public comment this morning? Just need to introduce yourself, and then you can proceed.
My name is Ryan Brettz. I am the president of friends of Governor Dick, and I'm a member of the Mount Gretna community. I'm here today marking one year since we came before you to make a presentation in a workshop session, delivering a presentation on the need for reforms at Clarence Shock Memorial Park to Governor Dick. I would like to begin by thanking the commissioners for their increased attentiveness in their role as trustees of the park. And I would especially like to thank Commissioner Kuhn for his involvement in taking on a position of liaison to the park. With your help, residents of Mount Gretna Heights have been assured to rights to their source of drinking water by seeing to the filing of an easement to their well on park property that had previously not been filed in error by the parks board. Through oversight at the county level, it was determined that authorization didn't exist supporting the position of park ranger, and that position was eliminated. The aggressive character of the ranger and concerns of nepotism in his appointment to that position and to the Parks Board of Directors and as allocator of the Parks Trust are part of the white paper case for reforms we submitted to you, and we are grateful that these issues have been looked into. We will continue to advocate for our primary objectives, an independent review of the Parks Forest stewardship to ensure the park is doing its best it can for the health of the forest. And we will continue to advocate for reforms of the Parks Board of Directors that it expands to include members of the park's various user groups, that it may better represent the community it serves. It is likely the case that these issues will not be addressed by the Parks Board without encouragement from the commissioners, and our hope is that you'll provide that encouragement. Our friend group organized over concerns we have in the future of the park, because we all love the park and appreciate just what a special place it is. Our hope is that one day controversies will be put behind us, and we will act fully as a traditional friend group in support of the park through volunteering, programming, and fundraising. Until that day, we will also continue to advocate much-needed reform. Thank you for your time and attention to these important issues in the life park community.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment this morning? If not, we'll go to the approval of the minutes of our April 4 meeting.
Motion to approve the placement as presented.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So ordered.
Chairman, if I may, before we get into our next item, I'd like to make a motion that we amend our agenda and include an agenda item to discuss an ARPA request that was made yesterday during our workshop session for a project at Soldier's Field in Mount Gretna.
Is that the motion? Okay, is there a second?
A second motion for discussion.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Right.
So that's added to our agenda.
Where will that be?
We can discuss that word.
You're talking about the the ARPA?
Yeah.
At the end of the miscellaneous?
Yeah, where I where I present.
I was gonna say, get into that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Very good. All right. Good morning, Mrs. Noonan. Just introduce yourself.
How are you, county treasurer? We had received some 416 and 417 of $16,987.73. That brought us to a total cash of $4,303,858.73. Our expenditures, excuse me, this week were $1,321,445.46. The tax claim is $55,062.34, bringing us a balance of $2,927,350.93.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject to audit.
It's removed and seconded that we approve Mrs. Noonan's report as presented. Any questions regarding treasurer's report? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved. Thank you. Morning. Publish yourself.
Michelle Snadley, Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations, we have Ricardo Rosello, substitute meal transporter, area agency on aging resignation effective May 10. Robert Hilligas, casual part-time security officer, building security resignation effective April 26. Melinda Cologne, full-time central booking agent and central bookings slash district attorney's office resignation effective April 19. Corinne Conlin, child abuse investigator and children and youth resignation effective April 11. Madeline Wank, full-time correctional officer at the jail resignation effective April 15. Tasha Lurch, juvenile services provider in the district attorney's office resignation effective April 5. And Terry Rudy, fiscal assistant at drug and alcohol retirement effective June 29, with the last working day being June 28.
Make a motion to approve resignations and terminations with special thanks to Terry Rudy for her longtime since 1978 fiscal assistant position. That's good service.
And I'll echo that regarding Terry. She's been a very loyal employee and a very big part of the drug and alcohol program in Lebanon County. Any discussion beyond that? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
The changes of status transfer motions, we have Catherine Pascal, promotion from caseworker one in children and youth to caseworker two at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly effective April 28. Kelly Hamilton, promotion from caseworker one in children and youth to caseworker two in children and youth at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly effective April 28. And Amanda Rittner, our written hour, promotion from lieutenant in the sheriff's office to chief deputy sheriff at the rate of $2,513.8 by weekly effective April 29.
Make a motion to approve those changes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So moved.
Meal transporter at the rate of $12.38 per hour effective May 6. Area agency on aging would like to hire Linda Taylor as a fiscal assistant at the rate of $1,405.59 by weekly effective April 29. The LCCF jail would like to hire Karen Nyes in office support one at the rate of $982.34 for weekly effective April 22. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Alexis Vergira as a casual part-time district justice office support one at the rate of $14.3 per hour effective April 22. The voluntary clerk of courts would like to hire Helen Gomez as a general clerk C at the rate of $1,117.67 by weekly effective April 22. The voluntary clerk of courts would like to hire Yaslin Perez as a general clerk C slash interpreter at the rate of $1,117.67 by weekly with $1,500 annual interpreter pay effective May 6. And the voluntary clerk of courts would like to hire Lisa Birch as a part-time court clerk at the rate of $15.96 per hour effective April 22.
Make a motion to approve the other transactions.
It moved and seconded that we approved those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So ordered.
Moving on to salary board. If there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt those transactions under the salary board?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt those salary board recommendations. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So moved. Thank you, Michelle.
Morning, John.
Morning, John.
Hello.
Would you, if you would, please introduce yourself and your position, and then proceed with your presentation.
Sure. Yes. Thank you, Chairman Phillips. I'm John Shod with the Office of Probation Services of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to ask your authorization to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for continued funding of the county's proactive intermediate punishment programs for fiscal year 2024-25. The intermediate punishment plan that we have in place offers viable alternatives to incarceration for eligible offenders, while still obviously sanctioning them for their misconduct, but also a way of managing the daily population at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility. Included as one of the major components of that plan, of course, are our three specialty courts, drug treatment court, veterans court, and DUI court. Drug treatment court being the most recent, which took effect in November 2022, and has been a very successful program to date. Also have electronic monitoring home confinement for offenders as an alternative, a form of sentencing as well. What you have before you is an advanced draft of the budget. It is not the final document. We're still looking at numbers and looking at other areas that we might be able to apply for IP funding for the next fiscal year. The deadline is May 1, and we will have a final application ready by that time. There are other narratives that we're also working on and some attachments that we need to include reports. All that is pretty routine. I'll fall together, and we will again have a final document by that deadline. The good news about this particular grant application is the fact that there's no local match required. So this is a state funding. So again, we'll work will continue, but we need your authorization to proceed. So if we have to answer any questions that you might have about what we foresee for the next fiscal year.
Well, I'll start by getting a motion on the floor to approve the request for the $180,970 application.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. Any questions from anyone regarding the motion?
Then it'll probably be a bit higher. Final document will be called more than that. I don't know exact figures, Commissioner.
How long has this been going on, the grant? Do you have any idea?
Well, I started working for the county in the current position in September 2012, and we had IP grants going at that time. There was a separation. There were electronic monitoring grants and our intermediate punishment grants. So that's at least since 2012, 2013 fiscal year, we've been doing some form of an intermediate punishment grant.
Okay, but it's been quite a while. I just.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate everything.
Keep up the good work.
We'll try. And of course, I can't leave her without probably all the obligatory signature. Double settlement here for this particular grant.
You've earned it.
Well, life is one big signature for you, John. Thank you so very much. You're a wise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No question. Good morning.
Hello.
I'll set for you. If you'd like to introduce yourself, and then you may the floor yours.
Good morning. I'm Holly Lakey, administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program. I'm here this morning to present contract amendments for fiscal year 2023, 2024. There are 14 in total, which is comprised of two from the mental health program, two for the early intervention program, and then five for the intellectual disability program. Those are primarily for increased utilization of services. So folks are using more services and more units than we had already contracted. We are requesting approval for $229,411. These expenditures will be covered through our current allocation and budget, so we are not seeking any additional county tax dollars to cover these expenditures.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second it.
Right, there's a motion and a second to approve these contract amendments. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs. So ordered. Thank you, thanks. You too.
Running ahead of schedule. Let's go and look out there. We're just sitting right here.
Good morning, yes.
Good morning.
We have documents to discuss, and you'd like to introduce yourself and from whence you came and proceed.
Richard Harley from Wellspan Health. And this morning, we're asking for approval of a resolution that will allow us to convert a an existing taxable loan that was a refinancing in 2021 with Truist Bank to a tax exempt. This is allowed under the IRS tax regulation.
Tepin.
It was the original bond issue in 2014, which was used to fund projects in Lancaster, New York, Adams, and Lebanon County. And that will be refinanced in 2021. It was prior to the call date of the original bonds, so it had to be refinanced as a taxable loan. And at the call date, which is June 4 of 2024, it can be converted over to a tax exempt bond. That requires county approval in all of the counties where the funds were expected.
You're the abogee.
That's a $45 million bond, is that correct?
Correct.
Make a motion to support the 2014 bond issue redoing as you're presenting it. Thank you.
I'll be second on the motion, Mr. Chairman, and I have a whole course of note for the record that I have a part-time position with Wellspan Health. And that's for the record, but check with the listener that nature of this does not require me to accuse myself.
Yeah, that's right.
No, thank you. Very interesting. Any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs. So moved.
Thank you very much.
All right, you.
Thank you, Rick. Is it entertaining the?
Yes, so following up on your motion to add to the agenda, a request from the Pennsylvania Chautauqua Foundation for a an ARPA grant for Soldier's Field Nature and Historical Site. Spent considerable time yesterday in a workshop discussing this. Feather is here. They, I guess, if you had any further questions, but the the ask is for a $150,000 grant to supplement the amount that they have raised, both through other grants and local donations for various improvements to Soldier's Field that include trails, some ADA walkways, lighting, bleachers, some resurfacing, and so I say if there's anything more you would like John to add, I'll just putting that on the table for that request.
Right. I think we're very familiar with this request.
I'm John Fettler, the vice president of the Chautauqua Foundation Association, to the foundation. Jamie, did you say about bleachers?
I'm sorry. I was reading. Yeah, you don't have bleachers.
No bleachers.
I was reading from another ARPA. Yeah.
Yeah, some benches.
Goodyear.
For pedestrians.
I'm sorry.
No bleachers.
Right. I don't want to make it think this. There's a stadium there or anything like that. That's not happening.
Please. Just the other supplement is that there's a recognition that Soldier's Field got its name from being the home of the Pennsylvania National Guard from 1885 to 1935. And there'll be a number of sign recognitions of the activities that the guard participated in during that time period. Thank you. I have, she have questions and.
All right, I'd like to get a motion on the floor to approve this, and then we can have discussion.
I can make a motion to approve this request for $150,000.
I'll second the motion, and I do have some additional information. I'd like to make sure that it's public.
It's a big good thing for that.
Okay, thank you. Again, I am not against this. I think it's a noble project. I really do. However, knowing that we spent all of our CARES funds giving it to nonprofits and businesses in the community, and the commissioners, the county was not, were not even allowed to keep any administration funds to administer it. There are other projects with the ARPA funds, so we don't have to raise taxes so much for our public that I really feel need to be made aware of, that I have discussed in private with our solicitor, not our, well, maybe some of the solicitor, but with our administrator. And one of those is, for instance, solar panels. And if we could put some on the county building, there's a 70% renewable energy grant available, and with a 30% match, we could use the match from the ARPA funds. There are new, we need new microphones. These are illegal. They have the potential to interfere with the signals down in 911 Center. The windows on the county building, if you look around, many of them are clouded, and they're failing. And we really need some new windows on this building. And that could also possibly fit in with the energy grant if they have an R value that's better than what we have. We have, again, the Crowe Barn in honor of Bill Smeltzer and also Bill Ames. We, I don't know where we are. We need an update on that. So I'm, again, I prefer to delay an answer so that we can get all of these pricings on. We have Monument Park where we requested, at least I did, benches and planters to go along with the med ed replacement of the lights, and they will be in a Victorian style to match when it was initiated. There was a suggestion yesterday about libraries, and of course, the Soldier's Field with the great project they have there. But I think we need the big picture before we approve this particular motion. It's not that I'm against it, but I'd like to see these others addressed so that we can spread this $813,469.34 to the best of our county, so we don't have to raise taxes for some of these items.
Thank you. Just based on my knowledge of this project and all the vetting that has been done by other, you know, municipal and governmental grants that you've been able to acquire and all the private donations. And the, you know, this is just about a two-year in the works or more project. We're at the tail end of it, and I'm 100% as Joel is in the support of it, but I'm willing to say that we can do this, and I'm going to support it today. No further delays. The longer we delay it, the costs are going to go up because of the nature of all these kind of projects. And you've come down from where we started at 200,000 to, because of your successful fundraising and some other issues that, you know, fell right, that you're at 150,000. I think this is the time we need to do this, so we need to support that.
To the timing is really good, too, considering 2026 will be celebrating our 250-year centennial anniversary and historic value and importance to the community is important to supporting this as well.
I'd just like to point out that things like windows, those prices aren't frozen either. They're going to go up too significantly if we don't act.
Yes, and I'd like to also, just just for the big picture reference. 21 million of this money that's been spent has already been spent on things that are going to relieve the local taxpayer. We've, you know, so the vast majority of this funding has been already committed to public safety and some other areas that certainly have relieved the local taxpayer of that burden. There's still tax money at the end of the day, as we all know, but so big picture, we have, they were first, you know, at the commitment from the county. So anyway, any other discussion? Yes.
I was just wondering, and I didn't know that this discussion was taking place, but when the gentlemen were here from the fire school, I was thinking about ARPA funds. Would potentially ARPA funds be able to be used on that water situation?
Possibly. You mean that's?
There might be more than one source of funding.
I think potentially that. I don't know how much you want to have a conversation about the the handout here, but I don't. So ARPA was intended for something COVID-related, a tieback to COVID. And and one of those, a big component of that is outdoor recreation, which is the category this fits in.
Excuse me, David. Do you have copies of this?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, and, and of course, the nine-one-one center, which is a, uh, has everything to do with, with first response and and public health emergencies and things like that. Uh, some of these items on the, on the bottom of the handout might be eligible, but I'm not sure replacing windows would be an ARPA eligible. Um, I, I don't know how to make a tieback to COVID on that or to, or on solar. I mean, those might be maybe a build back better kind of program, which, which is a federal program that was passed last year. But I, we have to be very cognizant of, of making sure that the projects fit into the categories that, that the ARPA Act uh spelled out. So I just want to point that out. I'm, I'm not sure that all of those would be ineligible. I'm comfortable that the ones that we have so far have, have certainly been eligible.
That's one of the, you know, audit, audit proofing the stuff, you know, it's very important that we can make sure we comply.
Well, I think we.
Get us into trouble.
I think we could check with the state and and get an, a pre-approval, so to speak, rather than wait for an audit, be proactive about it. Because I do see some ties to COVID. There were those that had to work in this building and we couldn't close down. We had to continue with government. And many other businesses didn't. I mean, restaurants and things, they were closed. We could not shut down. We did do some zooming, but um whether it's keeping power here, let's just say a big storm comes through and knocks out our electricity. If we have solar on the roof, we will continue to get electricity and we can operate when others can't. And, you know, with the windows, the fresh air and uh, but not wasting energy, all of that can come back. Um, I, I think it can be justified and tied in, but I think we should check with the state and get a pre-approval, so to speak.
Yeah, just to.
Um, yes, Commissioner Woods, I have um a couple of questions for you. Yesterday, you stated that the ARPA funding has to be county-specific.
Has to be what specific?
County-specific. It has to be spent on county projects. And that's was one of the reasons that you were saying that you wanted to, you were thinking of opposing this proposal. But as I looked down across this list and Leetown had bigger concerns with the proposal, Leetown had just recently ran an article highlighting all the ARPA projects and in speaking with the county administrator, he had pointed out that the very first project was WEPA. It went to WEPA. That was the first one. It was a side. It wasn't the most one, but it was the first. And, and we have the Fairgrounds, we have Expo, we have Lebanon Valley Rail Trail. Governor Dick Project. So there's some projects on here that have already passed that you voted to approve. Yet yesterday you said Bill Ames and you had an agreement. There was documentation. You might have had video. I'm very confused by that statement that the, what funding had to be county-specific when there are non-county projects that are already approved and completed on this list. Can you clarify your statements from yesterday? Why you said that? What? When money is going to non-county projects, if you said they had to be all county-specific, that, I was very confused by that. But I wanted to follow, because I know they were coming back today for this presentation and I want to clarify what you were saying yesterday and why you said it, is that doesn't appear to be the case.
I'm confused by what you said. I don't quite.
So if I, if I could try, again, I don't think her comment yesterday was that we can only use these funds for county projects. I think what she was talking about was especially possible. You got to prioritize.
Yeah.
County projects uh.
Over other projects.
Yeah, that, that was my main thought.
Right.
I, I didn't hear that.
I, I don't remember that.
But he is right. But he is right. That was our agreement. How do you want to spend this money? Let's, let's make county priority, so we aren't raising taxes.
But you also referenced an agreement with Bill Ames and I've been covering this issue pretty much since the beginning of the, I started with Leetown. I don't remember any agreement being passed. I mean, do you have?
No, there was no, there was no formal agreement. It was a question that was asked of us.
You said you had video of it, though.
I said I would check if I had video of it or if it was a direct question. But it seems to me it happened twice, because, you know, last night I thought about it some. It seems to me once I was at a question in this meeting, you know, do you want county funds uh spent mostly on county projects? And I don't remember the exact wording. And it could have been um an executive session, but I think, or a workshop. I don't remember exactly where it was. I just remember probably twice, at least once, but probably twice that we were asked and Commissioner Ames and I, and oftentimes it was, was pointed out, we were not in agreement, but we were in agreement that instead of giving it all outside of county, let's do something to keep our taxes in check. Take advantage of this for projects that um can cost a lot of money. And this way, we don't have to raise the taxes so much because they're in process or need done. And I, many of them are pointed out here. But I think maybe I, a little out of context of what I was implying, uh, you know, trying to say yesterday and.
I don't remember you using, honestly, I don't remember you using the word prioritize county projects or other projects. I don't believe that was said, but.
Well, I probably did not.
That's what you.
I probably did not, but Lebanon County projects, I was trying to emphasize prioritize. I didn't use that word. But if that clarifies it for you, you know, I use it today.
Well, it's not so much clarifying what I want to hear, I.
Yeah.
What you meant, what you were trying to say, what you were. Because you, it sounded as if you were going to oppose this project and you had questions about it and so.
I, I'm not against that.
The words, I thought they were supposed to be county-specific, that all the projects would be county-specific. That was my interpretation, what was said yesterday. And there's projects on here that are not county-based. They're not WEPA and Fairgrounds, Expo Center.
Correct.
Those are not county.
As long as county, we have a person on the board for that.
You want, you're saying you were prioritizing, that's what you, that the remaining money should be prioritized for.
Correct.
County-based projects.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, anything else for discussion purposes? Okay, if not all in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye. Um, only because we're doing it today and not having the big picture.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Your kindness.
Thank you, Jeff.
Start working on it, invite you to our dedication. We will be coming somewhere in the future.
Okay, appreciate all your work on this, Jim. All right. Jamie?
Yeah.
All right, a number of, a number of items to present organized here again. First is a resolution um certifying the local match for the uh Lebanon Transit system, which is a requirement to, in order to obtain state operating financial assistance. For Lebanon Transit, there must be a demonstration of local match, which uh the county has done uh year after year in the county's general fund budget and the, and the local match for two thousand and twenty-four is one hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and five dollars. And that is, again, that is included in the budget, part of the adoption and is certifying those funds.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve that uh Lebanon Transit match. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
The um hotel tax request from the Friends of Old Anvil. Um, they are requesting five thousand dollars in funding for Old Anvil Days, which we began, began back in the nineteen eighties as a fair involving uh at that time, just a few tables on the sidewalks and it has now evolved into a, a fair of two hundred vendors, stages of live music, thousands of attendees, house tours, reenactors, et cetera. Their total project cost uh for Old Anvil Days is eight thousand dollars and they're requesting five thousand dollar grant from the Hotel Tax Fund.
Motion.
Make a motion toward five thousand dollars to principles in Anvil.
Second. It's removed and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Agreed. Post same signs, so moved.
Okay, I have um exemption requests for disabled veterans who have met all the requirements of the exemption program from real estate taxes. They are Lorenzo Green of East Main Street Anvil, Raymond Fratini of Wanger Street, Rexma, Bridget Fry of Watson Street Lebanon and Timothy Shali of Lincoln School Road, Jonestown.
A motion to approve those exemptions.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those property tax exemptions for disabled veterans. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, post same signs, so moved.
Uh, you've been asked to send, to submit a letter of support for the Abbey Mural Prize Jury, uh, the National Academy of Design. This is for a mural, a moods, a ma, excuse me, mosaic mural project that is proposed to be part of the America Two Fifty P A celebration in two thousand and twenty-six. The uh, the Gretna Arts are proposing to, to facilitate this type of mural. Uh, and, but in order to do so, they need funding and are requesting that from this Abbey Mural Prize. One of the requirements of the grant submission is a letter of support from the local governmental jurisdiction, number one, and number two. Um, a, a promise or a commitment that it would be, this mural would be accessible and on display at a very highly visible location or public building. And um, I believe Commissioner Coon spoke with Pat Hurwin over at the um, at the Expo Center and he checked with the, his executive committee of the board and, and they'd be happy to host it if it were to come to fruition. So this is the very first step in the process. Um, and uh, they're asking for a letter of support from you to submit the application. The cost, I believe, they estimated somewhere around seventeen to twenty thousand dollars for this mural. It would be a, a community involvement type of a mural. It's made of glass, but made of just bits of glass, so uh, they would tend to have different workshops around the county where different community organizations could create these glass pieces. Uh, they would get then fired and put together, thousands of them put together into a mural, almost like a puzzle piece mural.
Depicting.
I'm not sure what their final.
Two fifty.
Uh, plan would be, but I think that's.
American flag, yes, an American flag.
Yeah, yeah, so.
To commemorate that.
May I ask if there's a, a building chosen and the size of the mural?
Uh, if I remember this, like.
Size of the murals, there's three panels that are.
Five by nine, I think.
Yeah, so the, the total would be uh nine feet wide by five feet tall, rather large.
I presume the location would be.
Yeah, sure.
The, the entryway of the, of the uh Expo.
Okay, um, that looks a lot like the one on the One Legion or whatever it is down on Lehman Street. But that's not, that's painted, that's not tile.
Is there a motion to, to support the letter?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to reinforce support. Or this letter of support and also want to recognize Carrie Lawyer theater, uh, who's bringing this forward and really taking the lead on this. And again, she's offered to coordinate these workshops and so we could have hundreds, just not thousands of people creating. And she said, she's done these before for other organizations. She said that, that the people that put their specific piece together usually take a photo with their phone and then when it's completed, try to find their piece. And so we've got a community involvement here, which is a special part of it.
You have to pass second emotion if we didn't have a second, yeah.
Okay, it's removed and seconded that we approve this letter of support and I understand there's a time constraint that that.
Exactly.
This today was filed, we had to do it, so.
Right.
Okay, any questions regarding the motions? This is probably our first uh, maybe second official act regarding the anniversary of the country, so. Um, no questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, post same signs, so moved.
Yeah, I have two things related to the uh Marcellus Shale Grant that the county receives funding from Act thirteen uh that can be, funding that can be used for environmental recreational uh typed improvement projects, revitalizations, things like that. So uh, the, the planning department, Julie Chaney in planning, had sent out solicitations uh and received applications late two thousand and twenty-three. And those have been compiled and put together for your review and, and just recently uh we got to to um put those together and Julie and I have some recommendations for you based on your input, based on the funding available and based on the nature of the applications. So uh, what I'll read here are the the projects that are recommended to be funded and, and at what, the cost of the project and at what level of funding. And then you can uh go from there. So the first one would be a Jackson Township project. It's Wheatland Woods Park project, which is development of a neighborhood park and Wheatland Manor Development. The cost to that project is three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars and recommended award is of thirteen thousand dollars. By the way, the available amount of funding is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars among all of the, you know, it had to be spread out.
This is a two-year.
Yes, it's every other year. Uh, we receive funding every year. But in the past, it was decided that rather than use that smaller amount every year to let it build a bit, then you can hand out some larger grants that are worthwhile.
So there's, there a reason we would hold a thousand dollars? If it's two twenty-eight available and we have two twenty-seven recommended.
That's just where we came out in terms of evening some of these out. There are a lot of thirteen thousands and that are half, half of the max twenty-five and so on, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
Not really. I mean, that's what the numbers came to, two twenty-seven instead of, if you want to divvy up to thousand somewhere.
Around a thousand or something.
You certainly, you certainly can.
We can do that, we'll get through it.
So let me walk through the, I'm all here. So Jackson Township, Wheatland Manor, uh Woods Park Project, thirteen thousand dollars. South Lebanon Township, South Hills Park Playground, two thousand and twenty-four, remove and replace the main playground at South Hills Park. Cost of the project, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand four seventy-six, recommending thirteen thousand dollars there. The uh North Lebanon Township Parks Maintenance and Beautification Project, plant trees, install new benches and reseptacles, cost of fifty-three thousand seven hundred, recommending thirteen thousand there. Lebanon YMCA has a Camp Rocky Creek Pond dredging project to dredge the lake, restoring the aquatic environment, restoring the depth for kayaking, et cetera. Cost of that is forty-eight thousand dollars, recommending a twenty-four thousand dollar grant to that one. North Cornwall Township has a Snitz Creek Park Inclusive Playground. Purchase and install inclusive playground equipment at a cost of one hundred and fourteen thousand seven seventy, recommending thirteen thousand dollars. Lebanon Valley Conservancy has a Gold Mine Greenway Conservation Project to acquire a deed of conservation easement on a hundred and twenty-four acres in the area of Gold Mine Road and north of Greenpoint Road. One hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar acquisition, recommending thirteen thousand dollars toward that. Cornwall Borough has Snitz Creek Park Phase One improvements. Amenities being added to the northern and southern portion of the Snitz Creek Park, a five hundred thousand dollar project, recommending thirteen thousand dollars toward that. East Hanover Township has a roof replacement project, rehabilitation of roof on existing pavilion and garage uh recreation area that is a twenty thousand dollar project, recommending ten thousand toward that. Richland Community Association Inc. has a revitalization project to construct a new picnic pavilion at their facility, which used to be the Richland Pool for uh reference. Uh, they now have a, it's a community association center there, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollar project, recommending thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, Lebanon County Conservation District has a two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six Lebanon County Envirothon, high school, middle school, elementary school Envirothons, uh seventy-eight thousand eight ninety-six requesting, uh they requested twenty-five thousand. I think it's the only one where it's a full recommendation for twenty-five thousand. I think commissioners have historically funded that uh maximum amount, twenty-five thousand. Also, Lebanon County Conservation District requesting funding for Swetar Creek Super Gauge, funding to collect water quality trends in Lebanon County of the Swetar Creek, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollar project, uh recommending thirteen thousand dollars toward that. Jonestown Borough has the George H. Coffin Community Park Playground Relocation Enhancement. Purchase new equipment and prepare the site for installation of the new equipment, a two hundred thousand dollar project, recommending thirteen thousand dollars to that one. Hilltop Playground Association plans on blacktop resurfacing and a greenway project, milling and paving of basketball courts, walking paths, common areas and six new decorative brick mason replanters, cost of fifty thousand seven eighty-five, recommending thirteen thousand. City of Lebanon is doing improvements to the Veterans Memorial Walkway Project, installing new metal benches, ADA tables, tree planting and directional signage, cost of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, recommending twenty-five thousand dollars. And Richland Borough, um Borough of Richland Park Revitalization Project, installing new playground equipment. This is different from the community. Borough of Richland Park Revitalization Project, installing new playground equipment. This is different from the Community Association. This is the Borough. Installing new playground equipment with ADA Safety Service, new tot lot and new youth playground. One hundred forty-seven thousand three eighty-five for the project, thirteen thousand dollar recommendation. And again, if there's. You know, the, that's, that totals two hundred twenty-seven thousand, if it's a thousand that's there, you want to.
I mean.
Tribute somewhere, but.
I have a thought for it if no one else has a specific. I was thinking with the clean water emphasis that we have, that maybe the Swetar, yeah, Super Gauge, they'd be a good spot for it.
I, I see, that's, um. These are all fabulous. I mean, but the Super Gauge, there's another one just a couple of miles downstream. I don't know. And when they installed, wanted to install this, I, I explained to them. That particular fact and there are companies, not companies. Bureaucracies really, uh, there's USGS, which installs free gauges, but I think they went through another avenue and they had to pay to install the gauge. And I, I don't know that they had any experience in it and maybe could have been more frugal. And so.
I'll withdraw that one. I, I think it was just a suggestion because it said clean water sounded safe to me, but I'll withdraw it and, and put it wherever you'd like to do it.
No, I, I think, I think it's good, again, well, they have another one to purchase. It's still going to the Conservation District, so. We have that thousand dollars. It doesn't matter to me, but I think that's split twice. I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve this list as submitted with one exception to, uh, item number thirteen of Lebanon County. Conservation District, Swetar Creek Super Gauge for additional one thousand.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Um, again. We're looking at a package and. There are two projects that, having had water as my background and I'm very passionate about it. The other one being the dredging of Camp Rocky Creek. I'm not a fan of dredging. Um, wetlands are natural. Ponds fill in naturally and create wetlands, and that is what is happening. Have to vote for the whole package, but tho, those two, I have very distinct rationale as to why they. Are not necessarily. On this list because I'm supporting them. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, good job, question.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I see that there was no amount. Approved at all for the Union Canal Tunnel Park. And Commissioner Coon, you just said you supported the, uh, the way the ARPA funds were being spent because of the historical. Value of that. And, um, these amounts are large amounts and I know that that a grant was for just a little bit over five thousand dollars. And the request was put in for, to pay for fifty percent of a new lawn mower. For the park, which is run by all volunteers. And I know in the past. That maintenance equipment such as that has been approved. The two years before for the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail Project. And I'm just curious as to why. That project wasn't funded at all. I mean, I know there's limited funds. It's like that for all grants, but because of the historic value. Of the tunnel and, you know, it's the oldest water transportation tunnel in the whole country. Why they didn't get any amount.
Yeah, I don't think it was a statement against history or the fact that it's the oldest. I think it broke down in my recollection. That it wasn't as good a fit as the rest of these in terms of the, the guidelines. That's, that's what I recall.
Okay, but money for this type of equipment was given in the pack.
I understand, but I'm just saying. Weighing against these other ones is what I recall, but Jamie, I, and then you have more.
That's, yeah, it was, it was due to the fact that it was, that it's, it's an equipment purchase and. And you may be correct about it in the past.
There have been equipment purchased used in the past because that, a previous meeting, uh, within the last couple of months. They actually did not spend their money within the time period and had requested additional time to use up their money. To purchase those types of equipment. That's only, that's the only reason I remember was because it came up recently, so.
And that may, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's, that was the.
I know I was hearing.
That was the rationale for it being just hard equipment versus.
The total number of requests tally three hundred eighty-nine thousand, correct, Jamie?
Yes.
And they had to whittle that down to two hundred twenty-eight thousand, so. Hundred percent of what they asked is. They're not the only one that didn't get a request, a specific request. Just trying to prioritize.
Anything else? Not all in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved.
Okay, related to those awards. This is a, a past award, but a request for it to be revised slightly. This is again, the Richland Community Association. They've received a grant. Previously back in twenty twenty-one, the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred. Part of that grant was for the, um, repair of a sinkhole on the grounds, uh, where they have their recreation and. As it turned out, that repair came in far less than anticipated. They are, and they still have that, the remainder of that allocation. They're asking if they could. Change the use, adapt the use of the remaining funds to include. Uh, repairs to, other repairs to the grounds. Such as establishing water and electric service, re-establishing water and electric service, landscaping around, uh, the building and the park. And they would ask that you give them that, that change or that revision to them. To the old grant.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. Okay, it's removed and seconded. Any questions? If any of you are all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved.
Everything.
Anything else from the floor? Anything else, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.